Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the August 18th, 2014 Waukegan City Council Meeting. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Velco.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham.
Present.
Alderman Conkin.
Present.
Alderman Moiseo.
Present.
Alderman Beedley.
Present.
Alderman Nussem.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present. Please stand for the invocation and pledge. Bishop Colburn?
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for another city council meeting. You said in the scripture over 2,000 years ago that man ought to always pray. We thank you for prayer today. Pray for our mayor, we pray for our aldermen, we pray for all our department heads, especially our fire department, our police department. Pray for our city that we'll all be one. In the name of Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's comments. I did get back from Sturgis, and the board will go after the council meeting tonight. So, it was a great time. Audience time, Porfirio Garcia.
Thank you for having me. Welcome back. My name is Porfirio Garcia at 2215 Yeoman, Waukegan. And I have-
Joe Schmidt, 725 Stewart Street in Grayslake.
And you all have a letter in front of you. I'm here to basically formally invite you to our Hispanic Heritage Fiesta de Patres Parade that we do every year. It's really been wonderful in the last few years, the support that we've received from the city of Waukegan, and a few of you have been there to support us. And just wanted to be more formal about it and be here to invite you. It's on September 14th. We expect a great event, and I hope to see you all there. Want to share something?
No.
Okay. Well, if you have any questions, feel free to call me. The letter is in front of you. My phone number, direct line is there. And I know you have a long meeting, so I'm not going to take too much of your time. So, thank you so much.
Where is it?
Thank you.
Where is it?
Good question. There is a poster that you can kind of pass from left to right on both sides of you. Basically, it's a parade that starts at Miguel Juarez Middle School on September 14th, right at noon, and if- and we walk on Washington all the way to Genesee, north to County, and ends right across the street from the library on our city lot. And there we continue the celebration there a little bit after that. Okay?
Porfirio, I'm told there's no rain that day.
I truly hope so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You remember last year.
I remember last-
God's years, Mayor.
Yes. And of course, city officials are welcome. They do- are become part of the parade. It's in the past, and I hope to see you there marching for a little bit of time, and have fun.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
(Inaudible)
Minutes. Motion to approve the minutes of the August 4th, 2014 regular meeting and exacting session minutes. Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Rivera. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There are no resolutions, proclamations, presentation, or appointments. Committee reports. Public Works Committee, Alderman Moiseo.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item A. Pay an invoice from the Lake County Department of Transportation for the reconstruction of a 2008 Sunset Avenue for an amount not to exceed $24,860.28. Funds for this will be made available from line item 555-916-027692, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedley.
Aye.
Alderman Nussem.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Thank you. Item B. Accept a bid for the Owansky Masonry of Lombard, Illinois for the masonry repairs at the water plant in an amount not to exceed $264,000. Funds for this project are available in line item 555-916-027043, as well as appropriate line items from the insurance fund, which are about $100,000. A lot of this is due to that storm we had in 11. It's on the penthouse of the water plant and other areas. The penthouse is not where somebody lives. It's where all the electrical stuff is kept for the public. It's not any- no one's living in the penthouse at the water plant, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedley.
Aye.
Alderman Nussem.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Item C. Enter into a contract with Acres Group Landscaping in Wakanda, Illinois for tree planting in an amount not to exceed $30,000. Funds for this project are available in line item 312131227619 until monies are reimbursed for a grant. This is some trees that we have gotten that we can plant. It are not going to replace the 4,000 ash trees that we have taken- are going to have to take down. It's about 110 trees. It's for this body to decide how and where we want to place them. All those inquiries can be directed to me or Mr. Haggerty, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedley.
Aye.
Alderman Nussem.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Item D. Authorize the proper city officials to enter into a contract with Lorick Construction Company and the Union Pacific Railroad for the construction- reconstruction of the Grand Avenue Bridge in an amount not to exceed $6.275 million. The city's possessive maximum out-of-pocket expense will be $1,439,740. Funds for this are projected in the motor fuel tax funds, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedley.
Aye.
Alderman Nussem.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
One more thing on that. That project will start in October. Also, for the aldermen that were not present at the committee meeting, I think all of them were, there's that road thing in it. We're not going to get into that now, but in your packet, there is a- that the must-do list of roads. I think everybody was in the committee meeting, so we won't go over that now.
And the bridge will be fixed before Memorial Day.
And the bridge will be done before Memorial Day. So, access to the beach will only be- Grand Avenue will be shut down to get to the beach, but it's obviously, most of it's during the winter, so. All right. Thank you, Your Honor. That's it.
Thank you, Alderman. Finance Committee, Alderman Velco.
Thank you, Mayor. The Finance Committee recommends waiving of the bid requirement due to the sole source nature of services provided, and further authorizes the proper city officials to execute an agreement with Traffic and Parking Control Company to procure and install new equipment at the 225 North County Parking Facility in the amount not to exceed $30,414. Funds for this project are available from Fund 595 Motor Vehicle Parking Enterprise Fund. And what this is, we are updating the parking machines to accept credit cards, updating the latest software and firmware, as well as a new computer. Also included in the quote is a new telephone intercom system. There are currently problems with the telephone system that is installed in the parking garage. And Traffic and Parking Control Company is the only company in the Midwest that has the ability to service the machines. And I so move, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Nussem. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedley.
Aye.
Alderman Nussem.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Item B. The Finance Committee authorizes the payment of an annual partnership dues to the Lake County Convention and Visitors Bureau/Visit Lake County for fiscal year 2014 in the amount of $25,000, and fiscal year 2015 in the amount of $25,000. Funds for these payments are available in line item 100-106024443. And what this is, Your Honor, is that we've been in arrears in our membership for the last several years. We are a constant member of the Lake County Visitors Bureau, and it's just like anything else. If you have a membership to a magazine or anything else, you prepay it. So, we want to get the $25,000 that is in arrears and prepay for next year of $25,000, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Nussem. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedley.
Aye.
Alderman Nussem.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Thank you, Alderman Velco. Next item, old business, there is none. Reports and communications, there are none. New business. Item A. Approval payroll dated August 8th, 2014 in the amount of $1,401,269.72. Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Nussem. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedley.
Aye.
Alderman Nussem.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Item B. Approval of block parties. Motion by Alderman Beedley, second by Alderman Conkin. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item D. Approval of candy days for Waukegan Little Fort Lions Club, October 10th and 11th, 2014. Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman May. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item E. Approval of the use of City Parking Lot B for the Fiesta Festival and approval of outdoor special event on September 14th, 2014, from 4:00 PM to 7:30 PM. Motion by Alderman Beedley, second by Alderman Rivera. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item F. Approval of the use of the City Parking Lot B for the Monarch Festival and approval of the outdoor special event on September 7th, 2014, from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM. Motion by Alderman Beedley, second by Alderman Cunningham. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There are no ordinances or resolutions. Alderman's time, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May.
Thank you. I just want to remind the residents at school, by the time you see this on TV, school's back in session. So, I want to remind everyone to be really safe around our schools. I also want to talk to our residents that live near schools. Get to know your school's times. Turn the other way. Don't go towards the school. Go away from the school. Drive an extra block. Help reduce the congestion around schools. I think I- we get a lot of complaints, all of us aldermen who have schools in our districts, about traffic around schools. So, I just urge residents, you know, take note of the schedule in your neighborhood and drive an extra block out of your way and avoid the intersection. That's the nightmare intersection. To parents who are dropping their kids off at schools, don't park on yellow painted curbs. Please, park a little bit further. Get out of your car and walk your kid to school. This is all for the safety of your children. So, I just really hope, when we start this new school year, people will be really cognizant of safety issues, and they take measures to make it safer for our children. Then the only other thing I want to mention is if the bridge is going to be under construction in May, we also need to think about our harbor businesses and folks that park down at the Metro train station. I don't know if there's some kind of- if we can get something either in the paper, some kind of press release, or something like that, but I think a lot of our residents do use that bridge to go to the east parking lot for the Metro. And then you have, you know, Larson Marine, you have harbor businesses that still take a lot of traffic from that Grand Ave- bridge. So, we should be- we should get some communication out to those people as well. And that's all I have.
Alderman Velco.
Pass.
Alderman Rivera.
Thank you. I know today, in Public Works, they had mentioned about the must-do list of roads. And I've looked at it, and I didn't see anything. And I know I talked to our Public Works Director in regards to River Road. This is an area where they're paying the highest taxes in the city of Waukegan. And what do they have to show for it? You know, I want to make sure that the roads that need to be done, and I know everyone has their areas, but I particularly want to make sure that the 9th Ward, especially in- on River Road, that these roads are taken care of. You know, I surely would appreciate that. Another thing is, a few years ago, you know, we annexed- remember when we annexed the area of Lawn Avenue? We annexed them in. We forced them in. And what do they get for it? To this day, they don't have any water. City water. So, what's the incentive for them? You know, if we annex these areas in, you know, I would really consider us- I'd appreciate it if we can get water to these people. And it's right there. And it's right there. And it wouldn't cost the city that- that much money. But I think that would be great for the city to get water to this area there. And to me, that would give them some kind of- for them to be grateful that we did annex them in the city. So, I just want to make sure that these areas are taken care of, and that's all I have to say. Oh, and by the way, thank you, everyone. My golf outing for asthma research was a wonderful success, and I want to thank all the people that, you know, helped me out in it and participated in it. And I want to thank everyone for that. It was a huge success. It was our 13th year of doing this, and we've raised over $200,000 for asthma, and I appreciate that very much. This community is just an awesome community. You know, when it comes to charity, when it comes to working, you know, in this- in this community for- for causes. It's a great town. Thank you.
Alderman Cunningham.
Two things. I want to reiterate on Alderman May's point about school starting. And Chief, I hope you're- Chief Wallace, are you here?
Yeah.
Yeah. Chief Wallace, I know that our school district tries very hard to make sure that the traffic in some of these schools' areas, but I- I just really believe they've taken on too much by putting these kids in some of these centralized areas without having a true transportation route. I look at the both of the high schools. So, I know Alderman Moiseo has been dealing with this for many, many years, and I don't think people really understood what he was going through until we went into neighborhood schools. But our parents, and it's no fault of their own, there is no drop-off pickup service or designation in some of these schools. There's- it's terrible. I am just surprised that someone has not been seriously hurt, more particularly these young kids. So, I urge parents, school administrators, particularly the- right now, I think it's put on the backs of the principals and the teachers, please be out here the first week, sometimes the second week. You must be aware that these little kids are running back and forth. I don't even think we have any- I used to be- I used to be a crossing guard. They don't even have the crossing guards no more. And I had an opportunity to go up at the new omni in Clearview area. I hope they're ready. I swear, I hope they're ready, man. Because if not, that's going to be one big headache over there. But I- I trust, and I know the aldermen's been working very close, but I just don't- sometimes they- I know that the thinking doesn't go into traffic because they like to put that on the backs of the city. I was even told one time, once it's on the street, it's the police department's responsibility. That's the attitude sometimes they have. But it's not our responsibility to make a parking plan for you. That should have been thought about when you decide to move these- these kids all around the city of Waukegan. So, I reiterate what Alderman May has said. Please, I'm begging you, please be- watch for these children. Slow down in these school areas. I know I'm going to be asking our Lieutenant Fitzgerald to traffic to put one of those little speed things that determines how fast you're going on McAllister. So, there- I mean, this is the emphasis, I think, on aldermen's. I don't know what we can do to get a message out there, but please slow down for these children. Please. Last but not least, I want to congratulate and appreciate Trinity AME Church, which is located at 200 block, actually, actual address is 210 South Avenue. They're going to be celebrating 200- correction, 110 years of community service and have been a church in Waukegan, Illinois. And they are the first African-American church in Waukegan, and second in the county of Lake. So, congratulations to Pastor Cummings and the entire Trinity AME Church family, and we'll be looking for the celebration. Thank you. The celebration is going to be the 13th and the 14th of September, for I think the mayor has already sent something, proclamation on behalf of the city and the entire city council. So, thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Conkin.
Yeah, thank you. I have a couple of things. I've gotten several phone calls over the past couple of months, and to kind of piggyback on what Alderman May said, school's starting next week. Well, winter's coming also. So, one thing that some of the problems I've had and the issues, I've gotten calls from about alternate parking. And Chief, I'd like to have you have the officers take- look a little bit harder at that. I've gotten several complaints about parked cars being parked on both sides of the street all night long. So, we might as well get people used to the idea. They have to get used to parking on one side or the other because when the snow comes, obviously, the alternate parking, that was why it was put into effect, but it is year-round. So, that's something that we want to look at. The other issue, I got a lot of calls on our business vehicles in residential areas. I know there's a lot of home businesses, but the complaints I'm getting are that they're bringing trailers with bobcat, especially landscaping businesses that are in residential areas, people working out of their homes. They bring in trailers with bobcats and all sorts of equipment on their vehicles, and they- again, they're parked in the streets overnight. And this goes along with what we talked about last time, was with the code enforcement and the fact that the code enforcement guys get off at 5:00, and so they don't see this stuff. So, I think that it's going to have to fall upon our police department to get the word out. And Chief, I'd appreciate it if you'd take care of that. Lastly, I'd also like to, again, piggyback on Alderman May's comments about keeping an eye out for the school kids coming up. One of the main concerns, this also goes along with Alderman Cunningham, one of our main concerns, is a lot of our schools are in neighborhoods. And when these neighborhoods were built, the roads weren't designed to handle two sets of parked traffic and then vehicles being able to go both ways down the middle of the street. So, like Alderman May says, you might have to park a little bit farther away. My main concern is that some of the schools get so crowded in some of the streets, and I could name Lion School, I know West School's like this. You couldn't- Jefferson's like it. You couldn't get an emergency vehicle down the streets to anybody's house, a fire or an ambulance. You couldn't get a fire truck if your life depended on it. Unfortunately, when those guys go out, somebody's life does depend on it. So, if we have any issues, like you say, in that regard, I'm going to- same with Alderman Cunningham, I have Lieutenant Fitzgerald look into it. We might have different traffic patterns around some of the schools. So, something to think about when you're dropping your kids off in the morning and at night. And again, for everybody else, please be safe. Don't hit no kids. That's all I have. Thank you.
Alderman Moiseo.
Well, since they've touched on it, I might as well, too, but, I mean, Brookside Campus, good golly, that's like putting 100 pounds potatoes in a 25-pound sack. It just doesn't fit at from about 7:00 to 8:30, and then from about 2:00 to about 3:00. It's just, I mean, you got 2,000, 2,500 kids, and you got a staff of 100 some odd trying to get in and out. So, it just doesn't. I mean, it's like having Gurnee Mills in your neighborhood. I mean, it just- it is what it is. We've racked our brain to try to figure out traffic patterns and things of that sort. You just- you just have to- if you don't have to go by a school during those hours, I would just recommend to the public, just don't go. The problem is, we got everybody picking up their kids and this and that. And like Alderman Cunningham, everybody said, most of our schools were built in neighborhoods because years ago, people, everybody walked. No one drove anybody to school. Everybody walked. So, it's just- it's something maybe we have to put our heads together with the district and figure out something a little bit better for traffic patterns. I don't have an answer right now. It takes a little bit more thought than that. So, I think we need to definitely look into that matter with District 60 and come up with a better- and I- I know Washington Street's, that's even worse. That's two major streets with a high school right there. I mean, that's craziness. So, we need to think about it and come up with a plan, and that's all. Thank you.
Alderman Beedley.
That's right. We all used to walk to school. I have four schools in the 4th Ward, and every year, it's a problem. They park in the business parking lots, take up all their spots. There's none left for their customers, so they get a parking company to take care of it for them, and they put a boot on the car. There's plenty of signs to warn them, no parking. And then they complain. Hyde Park School, right around the block from my house, they park all up and down the street. I don't know why all these parents have to take their kids to school and pick them up in the first place. There's city buses. They can get on a city bus, or they can walk. Some parents say they're afraid to let their children walk. I'm afraid of who? They'll never say who they're afraid of. I don't understand. It seemed like it was safe for kids to walk years ago. I don't understand why it's not safe today for them to walk to school. Anyway, I don't see any solution to that problem. I would like to make a comment regarding the July 7th meeting, the bill run issue, and I have a proposal this evening. I would like to propose that all elected officials' expense accounts be sequestered in a city bank account, which can be accessed when the proper receipts are shown, and you get your reimbursement then. I don't see any other solution to this problem. I haven't gotten any answer from anybody from my- my question from that meeting. So, I would like everyone to think about, let's put all of our expense accounts in a- in a bank account, and you turn in the receipts, then you get reimbursed for it. I think that would be the fairest thing to do. Maybe that'll come up in Finance Committee, the Finance Committee Chairman. I certainly hope he can put that on the agenda. That would be reasonable to me, so. Thank you.
Alderman Nussem.
Thank you. I had my last Ward meeting here at City Council when- well, Thursday, August the 7th, and just wanted to thank the mayor and all the city staff that was able to come out and attend, and all the residents that were able to attend. We had the Chief and Sergeant Corey Kelly, Officer Kelly Gordon for the 5th Ward, talk about the importance of establishing a Neighborhood Watch group. And I'm happy to say, out of that meeting, a new Neighborhood Watch organization or Watch group has been established for the 5th Ward. So, I'm happy to say that because of the Ward meeting, we were able to establish another Neighborhood Watch. So, that group will be meeting Monday, the 25th. So, it's important to do that so that you can look out for your neighbors. We had some incidences throughout the city with burglaries, robberies, and things like that. So, I'm glad that those residents thought the need to look out for their neighbors and establish a watch. And I think that is all I have. Thank you.
Alderman Tempest.
Next is the audience time.
Thank you, Wayne. Brother Blanks, 409 Oak Street, Black Abolition Movement for the Mind. Lake County's Hands Up Rally in support of Michael Brown against institutional racism. Join Black Abolition Movement for the Mind- Join Black Abolition Movement for the Mind Saturday, August 30, from 11:00 a.m. to 1: 00 p.m. at 18 North County Street, Waukegan, Illinois. All are invited. For more info, call 773-510-1713. Michael Brown could have been anyone's son, could have been anyone's brother, and what happened to this young man, it's not just a racial issue, it is a human rights issue. Anyone should have the right to go back and forth wherever they're going. There's a thing called due process. In spite of allegations that led up to the event, of what happened to this young man, Michael Brown, in Ferguson, Missouri, whatever the allegations were, there's a thing called due process of the law, and no one should play judge, jury, and God in that type of situation. So here in Lake County, we should not be the last to stand or the first to run from issues of civil rights, human rights, but even more so, this is what I consider spiritual warfare. Some might say good versus evil, right versus wrong, or God versus Satan, but that is a travesty that should not befall on any human being without the due process, and in my opinion, it was dead wrong, literally. So we will be at the county building. Once again, if you have any questions or for further info, you can reach us at 773-510-1713. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blanks. Entertaining motion to go into executive session to discuss real estate matters, motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Conken. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Thank you. We're going to go into executive session, we'll come out, we'll vote on the last two items under, in the agenda, and at that, the last two items will conclude the city council meeting. Thank you. Okay, roll call, madam clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Okay, under item A, extension of contingency contract currently in force with Thomas J. Fitzgerald for services related to the purchase of certain real estate in the amount not to exceed $36,000 plus expenses. Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Velco. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Item B, enter into a contingency contract with Thomas J. Fitzgerald for services related to the purchase of real estate, parcel B or parcel 2, in the amount not to exceed $40,000 plus expenses and commission, if any. Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, madam clerk. Excuse me?
I'd like to make, I'd like to amend that item B.
Go ahead.
We amended to include an expense cap, just like the other contract.
Okay, so, okay. Motion by Alderman Conken to amend this, to have a contingency cap of not to exceed $5,000, second by Alderman, expenses not to exceed $5,000, second by Alderman Tempest. Okay, so we'll vote as amended, on the amendment first, on the amendment.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn by Alderman May, second by Alderman Rivera. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.